of the Apostolic Church. If everyone would please silence their phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we come to you today so thankful for your faithfulness and your goodness unto us, Lord. We ask you right now. You said, "If anyone lacks wisdom, let him ask," and you would give liberty. And I am praying and asking for divine wisdom, Lord, for these men and women who lead our precious city, God. Lead them and guide them and direct them, that we may see your kingdom come and your will be done, not just in human earth, but in this city as well. We love you and thank you for your faithfulness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to declare the United States public, which is safe, a nation under God. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner, absent. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, today we have four proclamations and one presentation. And in lieu of reading the proclamations, we're going to yield the time to allow for everybody to come up and speak about their organization, as well as you'll be able to take a picture as well, up here with council, if you so choose. And please walk around and shake hands with everybody up here. First, we have a proclamation recognizing... Councilman Turner? We have a proclamation recognizing May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week, accepting will be Ms. Jaclyn Gunner with the City of Beaumont.
What a great crowd we have over here.
My boy.
All right, y'all, look right here. One, two, and three. Perfect. Thank you.
Any comments?
Okay. Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. It is my pleasure to chair Public Service Week yet again for the City of Beaumont. As you all know, that we have an extraordinary amount of talent within the City of Beaumont. We had an amazing committee that was consisted of various departments from the city. We had Miles Haynes from the City Manager's Office, Larissa Ali from Recreation, Rosanna Mahika, representing IT, Jennifer Peyton, Event Services, Lisa White, the City Clerk, Susan Smith, Planning, Lauren Galvan, Legal, Bailey Thompson, Accounting, Cristo Valencia, Finance, I'm sorry, Engineering, and we had Captain Travis Malong Song from the Fire Department. So we've planned a whole bunch of events this week for, to celebrate our mayor, our council, as well as all of our employees for all of the work that they do. And we're just so excited that we are here again, being allowed to do this.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring the month of May as National Mental Health Month, excepting will be Mrs. Julie O'Malley, Executive Director of the Mental Health Association of Southeast Texas. And I know you have some board members with you as well, so everybody is welcome to come up.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for what you do. Guys, for what you do. Appreciate you guys. Appreciate you all. Thank you all. Thanks for all you do. How you doing? Good to see you.
All righty, y'all, look right here. And one, two, and three. Thank you.
Who wants to go? Thank you all so much for having us here today and for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm here, I'm Kim Phelan, and I'm here with our board members. This is our Executive Director, Julie O'Malley, Ms. Bernice Monroe, Ms. Sally Broussard, Ms. Mary Young, and Regina Rogers. We are on a mission to increase awareness of services and to educate our city and our community that mental health should be treated no differently than physical health. And so, one of our big efforts right now is to advocate and make aware the new 9-8-8 number, which is similar to 9-1-1, but for mental health crisis. And so, we would like for that to be just as people would know about it, just like they would 9-1-1, and especially for our young people, because you can text or call the number 9-8-8 in a mental health crisis. So that's one of our big endeavors this year, and we have a lot of work to do. So thank you all for supporting us. And this is Ms. Bernice Monroe.
I want to take the time to commend this city council and administration for your strategic plan, okay? I don't think many citizens have taken the time to look at this, but we have, because under the guidance and leadership of Miles Haynes, a former student, your assistant to the city manager, he has pulled together a committee of 25 individuals representing individuals, providers, mental health providers, your police chief, your chief, Chief White from the Fire Department, and four of us from the Mental Health Board, who are sitting on this committee. And let me read the charge, okay? And we're working on it. Been meeting since, monthly since December. High priority for your 2023-2024 agenda. Community mental health. Goals, problems, analysis, needs, assessment. I didn't bring my glasses somewhere.
Best practices, potential partners, city role, report with options, direction, funding, and city actions.
Thank you for recognizing the needs of those in our community who are experiencing mental distress, mental illness, and your willingness to put this as a priority. Please note, we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And in recognition of Mental Health Month, I think all of you have received an invitation to our 2024 luncheon, Mental Health Matters, and we hope to see you there.
Honoring judges.
Thank you. At this event, we are honoring two judges, Judge Randy Shelton and Judge Terrence Holmes, who have initiated practices within their courts to address the mental health needs of those who come before them. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you.
And if anybody's wondering, we also have a proclamation for nurses this week. And accepting will be Ms. Anna Mchewski, CNO, the Chief Nursing Officer, and Ms. Michelle Johnson, Associate Chief Nursing Officer, Nursing Administration of Christus Health. And everybody else can come up as well.
Thank you, guys, for what you do. I'm a nurse practitioner, so I get it. Thank you, guys.
Glad y'all were able to make it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Appreciate you, guys. We need more nurses. Yeah, y'all gotta quit working so much overtime. Thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Thank you, brother.
There's a lot of you.
Thank you, guys.
I may have to squeeze in.
I gotta stand on my tiptoes, B F U.
You gotta squish down, brother.
All right, y'all, look right here. And one, two, and three. Thank you, thank you.
Tiers Nursing Week theme is Nurses Make a Difference, in recognition of incredible nurses who embody the spirit of compassion and care in every healthcare setting. Nurses' role is not easy, and some of the tasks they complete effortlessly are beyond reach for others. From the beginning of the life to its final hours and between, nurses make a difference by sharing patients with patients and families their joy or grief, and by extending the healing ministry of Jesus Christ. Every day, nurses make a difference by striving for the best experience and outcome for every patient. Nurses make a difference for each other in building a great team on their unit and their entire organization. It is a privilege and honor to be able to make a difference as the most respected, trusted, and appreciated profession. Thank you, Mayor West. Thank you, council. Thank you, city manager, for having us here and celebrating with us Nurses Week. Thank you.
Thank you. And last proclamation is recognizing May 5th through the 11th as the National Hurricane Preparedness Week, excepting will be... Gotta be prepared. Excepting will be Mr. Tim Osnocheck, City of Beaumont Office of Emergency Management Coordinator, and Mrs. Shaniqua Nobles, Deputy Coordinator, and some of the rest of the staff.
Tell us there's no hurricanes this year.
All righty, y'all, look right here, and on three, say hurricane. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, and all of the members of the diocese, as evident by all of the moaning and groaning when we came up here. This proclamation, every year, serves as a reminder that it is time to start preparing for hurricane season. As you all know, hurricane season begins June 1st, and it runs through November 30th. So now is the prime time to start to get ready and get prepared for hurricane season. Over the years, this area, again, as evidenced by the moaning, has become accustomed to preparing for hurricanes, but not only preparing for them, but also overcoming them. We have become a very resilient community. As Council Samuel always says, we know a thing or two because we've experienced a thing or two when it comes to hurricanes specifically. We begin our planning in our office this time of year, starting in May, and we encourage our citizens to do the same. And they can do that. There's three things that they can do to do that, amongst other is, one, register to receive those emergency alerts. As you all know, we switched to a new system, and so we really encourage our citizens to register to receive those alerts directly from the office. They also need to start developing their family plans, knowing where they're going to go in the event that we do have a storm, or we have to leave the area, and making those necessary arrangements. And lastly, it is time to review all of our insurance policies and start taking personal inventory of our homes and our properties, as we know hurricanes can be very devastating. Of course, we do not want a hurricane this year, but I am fully confident with the preparedness efforts that we are all starting today as a community. We will be even more resilient should we have to respond to one anyway. So I just want to thank you, guys. I thank you for your tremendous support. And forgive me, but today I have with me, of course, Catherine Ochnoscheck, who's Emergency Management Coordinator, Julian Cassidy, who's our Emergency Management Specialist, and Scott Colan, who is our Emergency Management Grants Coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to have a City of Beaumont Communication Update that we've gotten accustomed to. Thank you, Lon.
Of course. Good afternoon. We're excited to be back with the announcements for the week of May 7th. Due to the weather last week, the city's biannual community cleanup has been rescheduled to this Friday from 1:00 to 4:00 at Sprott Park. We'd love for you to come out and join us. It's National Pet Week, and Beaumont Animal Care is celebrating with discounted adoptions. If you've been looking for a furry friend for your life, there's no better time to adopt a shelter pet. And as we just heard, hurricane season is right around the corner, and the Office of the Emergency Management would like to remind everyone to register for STAN, the Southeast Texas Alert Network, which is the primary way we send out emergency messages. They upgraded to a new system last year, so make sure you and your loved ones are registered at thestan.com. The Parks Department is looking for volunteers to help plant 400 trees at Terrell Park on June 1st. Sign up as an individual, family, or group at beaumonttexas.gov/growbmt and help grow Bea with us. If you want to get a jump on fall, registration is open for Beaumont Rec's Fall Youth Coed Flag Football League. Sign up by June 2nd for the season, which runs September 7th through October 19th, for boys and girls ages 7 to 14. Volunteer coaches and refs are also needed. You can contact the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center for more information. Summer movies in the park are back with Beaumont Rec also. The schedule is now out, and we invite you to pack a blanket and picnic and join us at a park near you this summer. The first one is Migration at Wuthering Heights on May 17th. We're also celebrating World Migration Day at Terrell Park Nature Center as part of the Free Kids Nature Explorers Program, the Saturday, May 11th. Join us from 10:00 to 1:00 with all kinds of free kids crafts and activities. And now I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Jackie Simeon of Beaumont ISD to share some of the incredible youth summer programs the district has put together as part of their Summer Two success. Ms. Jackie?
Good afternoon. Beaumont ISD is pleased to offer a variety of activities this summer to keep our young people positively engaged, including these summer recreation opportunities. At Beaumont United and Westbrook High School from June 3rd through July 18th, we have programs including baseball, basketball, football, gymnastics, soccer, softball, volleyball, and track opportunities for students. At our middle school, we have an open gym available from June 3rd through July 18th at Peach MacArthur, Smith Middle School, Marshall Middle School, and Vincent Middle School. And we also have swimming lessons, swim opportunities available for any age. There are different sessions beginning in June. You can register on bmtisd.com. We also have breakfast and lunch. Anyone 18 years old or under can participate in this program, and you don't have to bring any kind of documentation citing anything. This is open to anyone 18 or under. At Amelia Elementary, Fletcher Elementary, Martin, Vincent Middle School, Beaumont United, and Westbrook High Schools, also at Bingman, Blanchett, and our Third Future campuses. And that program is from June 3rd through the 27th. Again, it's breakfast and lunch. And for reminders about these opportunities and others, again, please visit our website, Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you that were here for the proclamation and presentation, and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so, and thank you for coming. All right, we're going to move into public comments at this time, and it is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda items or regular agenda items, 1 through 4, or any other topic. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for the comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that myself and council cannot respond when you're making comments, but someone from our office will be in touch with you. So...
Addie Allen.
Good afternoon. My name is Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas, 77707. To the mayor, city manager, council members, and staff. I'm standing here again because I had someone to jump over my fence. I have a no trespassing sign in two places. I have filled out an affidavit of airship, and I think it's twisted because I called 911. The police responded. He took words, or he took something from a guy that was in my driveway, rather than responding to me. I was the caller. Now, at this point, I did fill out an Open Records Act. I have not gotten a response because when I talked with the clerk in records at the police department, I was called, she said she could not release it because the case was still open. That was on Friday. Last Tuesday, when I was here, I was advised that the case had been closed. I have not been interviewed by a detective. However, it sounded as though the Generec Supercenter owner must have talked to the city. I do not owe them a dime. And the problem is, why would someone jump the fence? I call the police, and there's no action. At the White House, when the guy jumped the fence, there was some action, and a fence higher was established. I can't afford to do that. So I'm here again because I think that there should be something done when somebody comes on your property uninvited. This guy didn't ring my doorbell. He didn't knock on my door. That's incorrect. It's incorrect. I have not gotten anything from the city since it's closed. And you just said, being transparent, Mayor, you will hear from the city. I have not. So I would like to hear something, and it's not fair. There was a witness that saw this, so how can it go untaken care of, if that's a good word to say? This is the second time I had a bullet hole in my front bedroom, and that's never been investigated. I've never been called. So these are two incidences, and I think that our police is supposed to protect, defend, and I guess I would be apprehensive to call 911 now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to make public comments that did not sign up on the kiosk? Then I have no one else, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion or a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Consider Resolution authorizes the city manager to water contract to Alco LLC of Beaumont, Texas for the Pine Street SWTP chlorine dioxide system project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz?
For the benefit of the public that may not have heard what this chlorine dioxide project is, can you elaborate a little bit about what this is going to do, especially in terms of cleaning up some of our discolored water issues we've had in the past?
Yes, sir. We had a study done a while back, and the number one recommendation to address discolored water was to implement chlorine dioxide to oxidize and remove iron and manganese from the source water that comes from the Nature's River. By doing so, this will allow us to hopefully decrease the frequency of that discolored water, which is caused by iron and manganese sediments within the system.
Thank you, Bart. And it's just, obviously, in the past, we've had many complaints of brownwater, discolored water, and I think this is a sign that the city council has heard you. It's not an inexpensive project, one and a half million dollars, but it's something that should go far, and you're confirming that, to eliminating that problem. Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Bart, based upon in the past, you know, with the brownwater calls, can you kind of speak to the capacity of the calls coming in now versus to what they were coming in when we were making these decisions to put this funding in place, and some of these mechanisms in place to kind of counteract that?
I didn't look before I came into council, but we do have a discolored water map on the website currently. I believe it's fairly low at this time. Usually, what will happen is that something stirs up or changes the flow within the system that brings those sediments, you know, off of wherever they're next to a valve or in a low spot within the water line. So it typically happens a lot when we have disruptions such as a lot of water breaks, things of that nature. And right now, we're not really in a high period of water breaks, thankfully.
Yeah, thankfully. Thank you, Bart.
Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number two, please?
Council Consider Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two to the contract with Alco LLC for the street rehabilitation citywide Phase Five rebid project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council to consider resolution approving the casting of new impellers for the Royal Street Underpass Pump Station. Street Underpass Pump Station pumps, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move for approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council to consider an ordinance adopting center point energy, Texas Gas twenty twenty three base rate case status and a settlement agreement, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
There is a motion for, is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Duria.
I would just ask that, for the benefit of the public that this is explained.
Is that me?
Yeah.
So this is similar to what we've done in the past. Previously, probably last year, Energy put in to do a reorganization. It was mainly based for their Houston companies where they were kind of reorganizing. None of the Texas Division cities, East Texas, which we, where we're located, had any impact towards them. So we went to council and asked y'all to suspend the rate increase, which you agreed to do. And so now we're back asking to just be a part of the settlement. The impact is relatively the same. There was no impact to us before the settlement. There's no impact to us after the settlement, but our neighbors in Houston get a sweet deal, so.
So they're not going to affect locally your gas bill or anything like that?
There was relatively no change in the initial rate proposal that they put forth last year for the East Texas Division because we're really not a part of those rolling blackouts or people who lost power, we're not really a part of that process at any rate. So when they came back and they came back for the settlement, again, like our, the impact to us is essentially the same. So whether we would have, if y'all would have adopted the rate when they first proposed it, it would have been exactly what we're getting now. We always recommend that you deny the rate just so if there is a chance to make it better. And just for the steering committee, there are several cities that are a part of that. Again, most of our people who are on our side of steering committee are in our East Texas Division, so we could just kind of unilaterally do that as a group just to strengthen our negotiation power. But this one has relatively, like I said, no impact for our citizens.
And this is concerning our natural gas or vote?
So center point is our natural gas, but for people who heat their home with gas, that kind of impacts, there were some impacts of that during the previous storms. Some people did loss heat, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, mayor. Council conduct a public hearing to hear applicant requests for funding from the twenty twenty four Hotel Occupancy Tax Grant Program for fiscal year twenty five, and will conduct a public hearing.
Okay, at this point, we'll open the public hearing, and our city clerk will be calling out your name, and you will, when you come forward, you will have three minutes as we discuss with the prior public comments. Thank you.
I'm Danielle Sutton, fifty one forty Rosemary Drive, Beaumont, Texas, four oh nine Family is the organization, speaking on behalf of.
Counsel, thank you for having me today. I want to thank you for allowing me to share the heart of four oh nine Family, and I hope you know and witness through our actions how much we align and work for the betterment and success and good for the Beaumont community and beyond. We are grateful to be considered alongside the rest of these wonderful, hardworking, valuable businesses and organizations for the Heart Grant funds, and if approved, we are excited to continue to exceed expectations and, excuse me, and building on the strong foundation set by now two years of four oh nine day. If you were unable to attend this year, please save the date. As proclamated by the city of Beaumont, we're always on the last Saturday of April, so it's already set that Saturday, April twenty sixth of twenty twenty five, we'll have the third annual four oh nine day. Sorry. So locals and visitors alike had an absolute blast experiencing an unprecedented amount of visitor, unprecedented amount of local favorites all in one place. And while the focal point for us certainly is Saturday, thanks to beautifully diverse groups of partnerships and marketing team outreach, everyone throughout the four oh nine area code is quickly learning to expect an entire month of celebration. We're featuring exclusive four oh nine deals and local representation. This means a greater reach and draw for the tourism industry, a stronger support system from the local community, and growing a number of businesses and organizations who are enthusiastic about joining together and investing their business and time in our area. Throughout the event, guests exclaimed how they had never ventured to Terrell Park before now, so we were excited to give them that opportunity to come out and recognize the gem that we have there. And then many didn't realize the extent of the local businesses and resources that we have in our area that's at their disposal. And so they got to walk through and experience that through engaging booths and time spent with these actual, the actual faces of these organizations and businesses and throughout our area. And so as we continued on, we, now we know four oh nine day has established today to be, to witness a unified moment where everyone is welcome. The local talent is diverse and brilliant. Everyone that participates in four oh nine day is four oh nine local, so anyone on that showmobile, they're here from the four oh nine area code. And then the southeast Texas cuisine keeps you coming back for more. We have all the food trucks and everything that you can enjoy. And then Beaumont truly is beautiful. They're out in nature experiencing what we have to offer on a natural, daily basis. As we, as we continue to discover how we are better together, sorry.
Thank you.
But my contact information is at the end of the handouts, and if you have questions for me now, you can ask, or if you think of them later, feel free to contact me anytime.
Mayor, I had a question, just so we can be on the same page before everyone presents. Madam Attorney, Mr. Manager, Mayor, is it appropriate to ask questions once they're done or get with staff and get it followed up? Like, how do you guys want to preside with this?
Oh, it's a presiding question, so.
You feel free to ask questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Well, I noticed in your application, you did request funds lower than what it actually took you to put on the event. Can you kind of speak to why you decided to do that?
Well, we do have sponsors that join with us, and because it's a public, free event, we open it up to any local business or organization that wants to join with us in providing that free time together. A lot of, I also, four oh nine Family is an LLC. It's my business, and I put funds towards that, and I organize the event and partner with the people here, and I just spend a lot of time, quality and effort, in making sure that we can do that together. But as far as less asking, not as much. I don't want to, there's just so many people, and I want to make sure there's enough to go around for everyone. I don't want to take more than, than I can work with.
Yeah, just very fair assessment. I just noticed that, that's why I asked, so, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Felschall, then Councilman Getz.
I'm sorry, you may have said this, I was, I may have been distracted when you did. I was reading your, for sure. But how many people do you average on this day, running through the program?
Well, this is only, this was our second year, this last April, the last Saturday of April, and last year was inaugural year, and we had around, we estimated between two thousand, or two, twenty five hundred and three thousand people, and this year, we easily doubled it, so it was well over four thousand people that came and went throughout the event.
Thank you.
Councilman Getz and Councilman Samuel.
Hi, Danielle. The event that y'all put on is great. It's like a lot of our festivals, calling attention to some of our natural resources, Terrell Park being one of them. I share your vision for promoting the park. It's a real jewel. One concern I do have, though, is when we're talking about hotel occupancy tax money, one of the criteria is to make sure those funds are being allocated to organizations that are going to be able to bring people into Beaumont to stay in our hotels. What do you have to say about that? Or, because my impression is that most of the people that enjoy four oh nine day are already local. Are you able to track people that come in and might stay overnight?
So, again, being just our second year, we are working on a good way to track that for the overnight stays, but we do reach well beyond the golden triangle. The four oh nine area code extends all the way into Galveston, up into Jasper, and beyond. And so we make sure to pull, while they may, we may sound very hyper-localized, it pulls in a whole facet of people. And for the hotel stays, they bring their families with them, as well as out-of-town guests and different things of that nature. So that's a lot of what we are, we're kind of reaching out to and marketing towards, and that marketing is continuing through social media, as well as newspapers, magazines, podcasts, and we try to have our radio, have our fingers in everywhere so that everyone get, we get the word out to everyone and know that they're invited. So it's for visitors and locals alike, so anyone wanting to know about this area, especially as it continues to grow, you know, we're wanting to develop downtown and different things like that, it'll continue to draw on people, and they can see exactly what's offered all in one place on one day.
Do you feel that there are some people that are coming in from out of town that are staying in our hotels?
I don't know about hotels specifically, but we did have several out-of-town guests as well. We had about a quarter of those definitely made up our population that came to attend the day.
Thank you.
Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Duria.
Well, I'm sure Councilman Duria will kind of piggyback on this, but out being in the park and seeing that, I saw a lot of people that went to Lamar earlier, that came into town. It's the first time I've seen that many people in Terrell Park for a long time, so it was a very successful event last Saturday. I do know that. Saturday before last.
Yes, I know. All that rain kind of washed away that one weekend rain.
Yeah, right, but great, great job.
Councilman Duria?
Just wanted to say something. I enjoyed it. I was out there, the Hundred Black Men of Beaumont had a golf tournament out there the same day, and a lot of us left the tournament and went straight to the four oh nine festival. I bought me a few bags of different brands of food and walked around and had some lemon. It was nice. It was very nice. It was a nice crowd. Councilman Turner was there with his whole family, and that's a bunch of people right there.
The bounce houses were the hit.
It was, it was great, and I really enjoyed it, and it's doing a good job.
Thank you.
I even had my dog out there.
I love it. The whole family is, it's for everyone.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Amy Elizabeth, thirty four fifteen, Minglewood Drive, Beaumont, Texas, speaking
Good afternoon. Thank you for making the space available for us today. My name is Amy Elizabeth, and I currently serve as the artistic director for Aimed Dance. We're a five oh one C three performing arts organization seeking to foster an awareness of and value for dance as a fine art in southeast Texas. We do this through educational programming, live performances, and professional networks. Aimed Dance Summer Fest is a multifaceted festival, offering classes, concerts, community events, and several self-learning internship opportunities for our local youth, and this allows us to maximize our mission. Stepping into our fourth summer festival in twenty twenty four, we have seen our programming go from regional to national and to international. Students come from Texas, Louisiana, Florida, and more. Our emerging choreographer fellows have come from California, New York, and this year's recipient from Michigan. Ooh, y'all is intimidating. So this is my first time behind the podium, so thank you for your patience. In twenty twenty three, our featured guest choreographer, Elizabeth Minatoli, came to us from New York via Rome, Italy. At its core, Aimed Dance Summer Fest was created to generate opportunities and experiences for all. From the youth taking the stage alongside professional artists and sharing the studio to learn and grow, to audience being introduced to artists and works that they may otherwise not have access to. Our goal is to make Aimed Dance Summer Fest the destination for dance right here in southeast Texas, the only event of its kind at this magnitude in the state of Texas currently. In four years, we've grown from an idea to a fantastical experience, and I just can't imagine how far our reach can spread with the support of the city behind us. So thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to continuing to support the arts in southeast Texas.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments?
Did a good job. No need to be nervous.
Very good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ling Castle, five hundred Main Street, Beaumont, Texas, Art Museum of Southeast Good afternoon, mayor, city councils, city manager, management, and citizens. The Art Museum of Southeast Texas is widely recognized for its changing exhibitions. Three to five, three to four times a year, artists come to install their artwork, often staying several days. Out-of-town scholars, gallerists, and collectors join us for programming, such as gallery talks, further accounting for hotel stays. These exhibitions continuously draw visitors nationally and internationally. We have noticed our, hopefully you have noticed our digital billboard currently on I ten eastbound, just after you cross the San Jacinto River, promoting the current exhibit, Alicia Egert, All the Light You Can See, or the neon artwork on Main Street at the Amset Grounds is also part of this exhibit. This museum began in nineteen fifty. We offer free admission, and we are open seven days a week. Our cafe is run by two Magnolias, is open five days a week. Aside from regular programming, we offer spaces for meetings, dinners, receptions, which also attract hotel guests. The C V B Chamber and B N I hold regular meetings there as well. We often host out-of-town visitors, such as the fifty-two flower judges who stayed in hotels at the biannual Magnolia Garden Club Flower Show this past March. We provide cultural enrichment for the community, starting with free tours, as well as thirteen education programs for all ages and abilities. Two multi-visit education programs also direct partner, are also direct partnerships with B I S D. We also provide outreach programming to remote communities. We also have regular presence at community events, such as the mural fest. We are proud that we have a diverse board, staff, and audience. Last fiscal year, ending on September thirtieth, we had forty eight thousand eight hundred and fifty visitors. Of these, one thousand four hundred and twelve are from out of town, and we had three hundred and nine hotel stays. Our social media stats include fifty six thousand views from Google, almost a hundred and sixty thousand, sixty seven thousand profiles reached on Facebook, and fifty eight hundred reached on Instagram. We mail out four thousand invitations annually all over the U.S. promoting our exhibitions. We are also accredited through the American Alliance of Museums, which also attracts out-of-town visitors who are looking for a higher level of museum experiences. Quarterly free family arts days continue to be a huge draw, with largest attendance records this last fiscal year. The past Museum Madness, the biggest fad ever, had thirty six fifty four visitors this past October. We regularly partner with community organizations at our fads, such as the I Rule Dance this past Saturday. Amset has a stellar record of completing projected programming efforts for its accurate and honest reporting of grants awarded on the state, local, and federal levels. We greatly, greatly appreciate the incurred support and financial support the city has given us, and we especially want to thank the C V B, who has been instrumental in promoting our events.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Any, any questions? Councilman Duria?
When you say American Alliance of Museums, I think that's pretty huge to have that type of accreditation. I will say, we had over fifty elected officials that came down, and Andy did a good job, like, touring. I actually brought them to the museum, and they really enjoyed it, so that is a big plus, but that kind of stands up, stands out to me drastically.
Thank you. Yes, we join the top three percent in the nation as being accredited. The only other museum in the entire region that's accredited is the McFadden Ward Museum.
Well, thank you very much.
Amanda Yarborough, seven oh one Main Street, Beaumont, Texas, Beaumont Children's Museum.
Good afternoon, mayor, everybody, administration, council members, guests. The Beaumont Children's Museum continues to strive to promote family fun in an interactive environment where children thrive and get excited about learning together. Our mission is to ignite the growth and relationship of children's family, families, and communities through interactive learning and play. The children's museum has shown continued success with annual attendance over 60,000 guests in 2022 and 2023, and in this past year, 26% of those visitors traveling from outside the Golden Triangle region. As we continue to attract visitors, B C M finds many ways on our program and event calendar to encourage and impact positively local tourism. Not only is the museum promoting tourism, but we are also providing family entertainment to support our community's quality and life enhancement. Children's museums continue to be the fastest-growing sector of the museum community worldwide because there is an increased recognition of the power of the hands-on, interactive, and playful learning exhibits. Not only are these playful learning exhibits important for development, but also important for the introduction of a strong appreciation for museums and the value that they hold as a child and family grows. We know travelers seldom choose their destinations based on one reason, but because of multiple great activities that entertain for a trip. Most leisure travelers are families and choose their destination based on a variety of family-friendly activities available. Beaumont has all of these. This past year, B C M added two billboards on I-10 and boosted media campaigns on radio, podcasts, and statewide publications. Moving forward, we would like to continue those campaigns and add an additional billboard recognizing the downtown museum district and additional funds to promote the museum via social media, geographical targeting, and program media campaigns. These will promote and continue to remind B C M, remind of B C M and Beaumont as a place to stop for a break and a place to return and enjoy. Most importantly, encouraging staying overnight to explore the city of Beaumont and all the great places that it discovers. Thank you so much for the, the city of Beaumont, for their continued support through Hot Tax, but in general, the support of the Beaumont Children's Museum. Do you guys have any questions for myself?
Any questions? Did a great job.
Thank you for your time.
Shelby Brandon, 3025 French Road, Beaumont, Texas, Beaumont Heritage Society.
Hi, good afternoon. It's wonderful to stand before you today representing Beaumont Heritage Society. Beaumont Heritage Society is a nonprofit organized to educate and engage our community through Beaumont's history and heritage for a better future together. In the last year, we've worked tirelessly on improving operings and offerings. The historic building that houses our office has new sheet rock after a multi-phase plan to stabilize and improve the space began. It is readily awaiting the planned setup of our new children's exhibit, and that will be, the first stages of which will be complete by the end of this year. We've made strides in programming, now offering museum-in-a-box, virtual tours via visit tour for those who cannot attend the site in person, TECS aligns special programming for classes, and now homeschool days every quarter. All of this would not be possible without the support we received from hot funding to help us promote and draw visitors to our space, visitors that ultimately help us sustain the costs associated with keeping the 179-year-old museum alive. We are seeking funding to promote the John J. French Museum's general tours and school tours to out-of-town guests, to promote our annual events like the Museum Madness Pumpkin Walk, Christmas Candlelight, and Easter Egg Hunt, and to help us set up our newest heritage tourism initiative, which will be guided downtown walking tours. Thank you so much for your continued support of our endeavors.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Penny Lelux, 9227 Cajun Way, Orange, Texas, with the Boomtown Film and Music Festival. That's, thank you.
Mayor West and Councilman, thank you. Boomtown has been having the film festival since 2008, and Southeast Texas Arts Council started partnering with them two years ago. And this last year, we had a very successful year that we exceeded our attendance goal, which even though it was a modest 300, we exceeded that this year. We also had filmmakers that came basically in packs this year. Usually, you only get one or two for a film, but we had five that came from New York, five that came from Mississippi, seven that came from Oregon. We also had filmmakers that came from Massachusetts, Oklahoma, Florida, Louisiana, and there were others. There were 30 out-of-state filmmakers that came in. There were another 10 filmmakers that came in from Texas that were more than five hours away. We had 60 filmmakers in total that came. And so, they not only come and stay, but they're also potential future filmmakers that may come back for your film-friendly initiatives. So, they, it's kind of like a double, a double-edged, not sword, but you may get two bangs for your butt, basically, that you get the tourism dollars, but you also potentially have other filmmakers that may come back. We did have one from last year that is actually looking, he found a location, not in Beaumont, but in southeast Texas, and is looking to come and do one, and he's coming in from Rhode Island. And so, it is making that impact. And when Linda Reese was here last year, she was amazed at some of the locations that were downtown Beaumont. And so, we are making that impact. I know there were 40 filmmakers that stayed at least two nights, some of them stayed three nights. We are looking to expand from two days to three days this year, so that even will have more filmmakers staying here. And the longer they stay, then the better they get to see what is here, and they may come back and make another film. So, they're not only staying in the beds, but if they come back later, that's a bigger increase. And just a small film that was done in Woodville a couple of years ago brought in 20 bed nights just for cast and crew. So, even a small film can make an impact for what you're looking for. And so, we appreciate your continued support and hope that you will, again, support the film festival this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Gess?
You know, looking through this booklet, it kind of reminds me of our own little local version of South by Southwest. There's so many things that you have in terms of all types of film, theater, music, panelists to have discussions. It's really amazing, and we just need to get the word out.
We utilize nine billboards locally through Orange, Jefferson, and Hardin County. Our Facebook ads targeted people at least five hours out, San Antonio, Dallas, and all the way to New Orleans, the different film hubs. And then, the submission process is on something called Film Freeway, and that goes worldwide. So, we did a lot better. Yes, we're getting the word out, and we are growing, and we grew a lot this year versus last year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just, it's just a compliment to you, this, this year versus last year, you can see the growth, and I see the substance in what you presented this year. I just want to compliment you on that.
Sue Bart, 700 North Street by my Texas, Downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for inviting us here to defend our applications. I was assured you all had access to the applications, and you've read them, so I wasn't really sure what else I could add, except that it was a long haul to get that designation from the state, and because we kept our ear to the ground, discovered this opportunity that would bring all this additional funding in from the state into Beaumont, I certainly didn't want to see it going all to Dallas, Austin, Houston. And this year alone, we've brought in 70, more than $72,000 in grants for organizations like the Southeast Texas Arts Council, like the Beaumont Civic Ballet, and like the Art Museum of Southeast Texas. They've accessed these grant applications, they've gotten approved. I anticipate three more organizations applying for those funds. A million-dollar organization can access up to $250,000 for a single project, and I want to see this town take advantage of it. I don't have too much more to say, except, you know, if, whatever the application would, how I provided an answer for that, but we just held a wonderful, through great opportunity and help from the C V B, we participated in a second day for 409 Weekend and held an arts festival Sunday at the Event Center. To make that a two-day event, it was a lot of fun. We never could have done it without the C V B's help and the Obama Restaurant Group. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina, and I think it's Summy, 5550 Jimmy Simmons Boulevard, Beaumont, Texas, Lamar University Spindletop Boomtown Museum.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gina Summy. I'm the museum director of Spindletop Boomtown Museum. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. My vision is to promote Lamar University Spindletop Museum as our premier historic destination for tourists and prospective students. I'm here to tell you that the museum is currently undergoing some really exciting changes. If y'all haven't been out to visit, please come out to see it. We are updating our museum to include more spaces to hold large-scale events, and we hope these events will attract large audiences from outside of Beaumont. Some of the updates include renovating our banquet room, adding an outdoor fire pit, getting the gift shop and replica buildings treated and painted, and additionally, we will be selling barbecue and opening a spacious covered pavilion, which will hold 100 people. With these changes, we hope to attract tourists to Beaumont to experience the historic backdrop and vibrant culture of southeast Texas. This Hot Tax grant funding would significantly impact our ability to advertise and promote the museum's annual events in addition to new events. Our most popular events that have historically brought in larger crowds, we hope to continue to grow these, grow these events. They include October Spook Fest, December City in Lights, and the 124th Spindletop Anniversary in January. In addition, we have found success in promoting live entertainment, outdoor concerts. We've had car shows and trade shows and more so far this year. Spindletop Boomtown Museum will also provide a unique venue available to rent, which we anticipate will bring foot traffic outside of Beaumont to experience our unique Boomtown. We are asking for this Hot Tax grant to help promote on satellite radio, YouTube, Google Ads, newspaper, and media outside of Beaumont. I personally feel very grateful to be part of Spindletop Boomtown Museum. I'm excited to usher in this new air for the university and for the museum. I'm committed to making a difference and bringing new ideas to help promote tourism in Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Laura Childress, 3830 Highway 365, Port Arthur, Texas, Mardi Gras, Southeast Texas.
Thank you for having us here today. Tim Romero, who is our chairman of the board, I am president of Mardi Gras Southeast Texas, really appreciate the award that we got last year, and it helped us improve so many different areas. We spread it across the children's area by allowing a free opportunity for our, around the lakeside, to have a whole thing of inflatables and jumps and different experiences, races, practice, target practicing, things like that. Our theory on it has been that the more we can give back, the better the festival will become. So, therefore, allowing free areas so that it doesn't have such a price tag when families come in, you know, that, that's part of what our funding helps to alleviate. We also hope this year, and I'm working very hard to get a sponsor for our Free Family Night. I don't know which night that'll be. It'll depend on the amount of the sponsorship, but we're trying to find ways to give back and invite more people in that may not know about us. The other thing that we did last year was to conduct community meetings. We called them 411, Mardi Gras 411s, and what we did was explain what we do and where the funds go and how you can be involved. They were very successful. We hosted them at restaurants throughout the community here in Beaumont and just invited people in. It was a social. We also did a showcase musical talent for local talent here to put on a stage on the weekend for country and western music. We have big plans. We find our expenses growing faster than we would like, but I guess everybody's experiencing that. We did have an increase in hotel traffic this year because we brought in not only entertainers that stayed, but vendors that stayed, as well as committee people that just came in to help and support. Volunteers are a very big part of what we do. Tim, did you have a comment?
I just want to say, listening to the width and breadth of the diverse cultural entertainment opportunities within the city of Beaumont is, it's amazing. And we feel that any monies we receive from the hotel occupancy tax that we can use to enhance Mardi Gras enhances that opportunity for the citizens of Beaumont and the city. And we're proud to be partners with y'all with that. And I just applaud everybody for this great, great opportunity of entertainment for our citizens.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank y'all.
Menday, 6555, I'm not sure what tribe is that. What is that, man? Claiborne? Claiborne Drive by my Texas. Obana 3.
Administrator, city council members, Mayor West, thank you for having me. We have just completed third year of Beaumont Mural Festival, and to say that it was a success is not giving enough credit. Based on your help, we were able to kind of grow the fest more than double from the previous two years. At the end of the third year, attendance went north to 22,000, and currently still going, social media impact, we have reached over 10 million hits across all social media. The festival produces, although it's not a brick and mortar, it produces art and areas where you can visit all year round for years to come. Not a single mural from year one has been touched. Everything has been unbandalized. So, just going from there, the art for people is something that they want to see. We had direct impact on tourism based on the people that are coming in, the artists were coming in. This year, we not only went nationwide, but we also went international. And with the imprints on social media, we actually hit all seven continents, and this is based on the research that we did on third party. And with the C V B's information, we're able to come in at the third year on a two-day fest as a second, and attendance only to Mardi Gras. And thank to Mardi Gras, too, for being a part of our festival, helping us promote it. With all that being said, this also was a very critical year for the festival. I know it's a big number that you guys see in front of you, but since year one, I have said that this is something that I brew strap personally, myself. And with us expanding our projects, now reaching, for example, the trail at Terrell Park, being able to do the underpass in front of Charles and Pauler, we do have sponsors, but with the cost going up, we're always looking to make sure that the artwork that we're placing is in the proper place, in the best possible place. For example, right off Calder, if you see it coming off the highway every single day, that piece was originally a fifth of its size. We wanted to put it somewhere that it was going to be instrumental in introducing people to Beaumont coming into downtown. So, now is why you see it where it's located in the size that it had. I myself personally can only do so much with what I can put into it. I would love to continue it, but like I said, I also do have limitations. So, we are really trying to seek proper funding for the festival. And again, on behalf of J. Muzak, C V B, and myself, thank you for allowing me to give back to my community in my own way through public art, and hopefully that we can get the festival here to stay and continue growth.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Turner, Councilman Durya?
Mayor, if I may, I made a comment after the mural.
Mayor, if I may, I made a comment after Mural Fest, and I just hate that you weren't able to hear this comment. We had a city councilwoman from Waco, and I also had a city council member from Fort Worth come down and meet me here just to see it because they heard about it two years prior, too, and they want to bring it to their community. So to say, I always look at statistics and data, to say Waco has grown at the rate they have grown census-wise, for them to want to come to Beaumont, Texas to implement something and bring it to their community, you know, that speaks volume because, you know, normally, you know, councilmen would compete about those kind of things. So that's something I take a lot of pride in. I just wanted to let you know that you literally had council members from other cities down here trying to implement and basically bring this event to their city. So to set a trend like that in Texas is huge, especially cities that are growing at that rate. So I did want to say that to you.
Councilman Turner, I want to thank you guys, and I want everyone here to know, I'm going to be transparent. We have been contacted by several other cities, not just in the Golden Triangle, but in the state of Texas, wanting us to move our festival. I am loyal to Beaumont. I'm not taking it anywhere. If the festival doesn't happen, it will be the end of it. I'm not going to go help another city when, I've, I've said from the front, this is something I wanted to do for myself to give back to my community. And regardless of what happens, it will either stay in Beaumont or it will not happen.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Kristy Fagan, 600 Main Street, Beaumont, Texas, Texas Energy Museum.
Hello. My name is Crystal Fagan, and this is Rafaela Corbella. We're with the Texas Energy Museum, and I am here to tell you again this year that the Texas Energy Museum is a city museum. It was founded by the city of Beaumont. The concept for it was presented by the city council to the city council. Its implementation was a collaborative partnership between the city and Lamar University. City council chose to open the museum's doors on January 10th, 1990. The January 10th date marks the anniversary of the 1901 Spindletop Gusher, a gusher more powerful than any previously seen in the world. Without the discovery of Spindletop and the resulting technological advances, the world would look very different today. Spindletop sparked an era of technological development before only imagined. Having this resource and innovation in America made each and every one of us full, warm, and safe because it made travel and commerce accessible, the American economy strong, and our military mighty. The Texas Energy Museum highlights this discovery and the resulting technological advances. The oil and gas sector and the related fields are still the primary reason people locate to southeast Texas. The Texas Energy Museum has been bestowed the gubernatorial title of the Texas State Museum on Energy, and under Governor Rick Perry, the Energy Museum was given a Rising Star of Texas Tourism. The 22, 23 attendance was around 8,500, but this year, we're already over 10,000, and we're on track to have 12,000. Last year, when I was here, I told you that was my goal, and I'm confident we're going to make it. Our overall attendance suggests that 15% to 20% of our normal visitors stay in Beaumont hotels. Our out-of-state, out-of-country attendance sits about 35%. This year's blowout fundraiser had a little more than 900 people in attendance, and at the time of the registration, 18%, they intended, uh, 18% said they intended to stay in a hotel in Beaumont. The Texas Energy Museum provides 100% free school programs to southeast Texas children with scheduling preference given to BISD. We can only see 45 children at a time, but we partner with the Art Museum, the Fire Museum, and the Edison Museum to allow us to see each 200, up to 200 children before 1:00 PM. This year, we expect to see around 3,000 K-12 children. Since last year, we have completely renovated our children's hands-on exhibition space. For the first time, the, uh, Energy Museum has an educator in our budget. We've retrofitted lighting, uh, to LEDs as an energy-saving sustainability measure. And we are also working with a Dallas-based exhibition firm for three, uh, possible new permanent exhibitions, and that is all.
Thank you very much. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. With that, we will, uh, close the public hearing, and we'll just move into council member comments, and I will start with, uh, Councilman Neal.
Don't have any comments, Mayor, but I do have a question going back to the hot tax. So there's $548,000 worth of requested funds. How much is available to give out?
I think they kept it at 300,000.
So that's going to be coming back to the council here in the next couple of weeks?
Yes. There's a board that'll make a recommendation to council. Council make the final decision on how much everybody gets.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Samuel. All right. Thank you, Councilman Samuel. Councilman Fellshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Turner.
One of the hardest things I've done since I've been on council was have to approve so many great entities coming in front of us to see how the cities can assist and help them. So I just wanted to compliment everybody who came to the podium and came to the mic. That's not always easy. And I want to thank you guys for what y'all do in our community because without people like y'all, our community wouldn't thrive and grow in the direction that it's been growing in. I'm confident that Beaumont will grow, and with people like y'all, that's what's going to help us get there. So I just wanted to really take the time out to say thank you because I know it's not easy putting an application together, coming up here, giving your spiel, and also, even if you don't receive the fund, still going. So I just want to encourage y'all to please keep going. I'm appreciative of y'all. If I could, I wish I can give all y'all the money that y'all asked for, but I just know we can't because it's a budget. So I just want to compliment y'all and tell y'all thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Gatz.
All over the city? Do y'all hate them as much as I do? These signs are put up by out-of-town businesses. They are predatory in nature. They take advantage of people that are in distress economically. They offer them low-ball numbers for their homes. But to me, they just trash up our city. They are put into our city easements. I've seen them in our esplanades. They are tacky, and they break the law. We have ordinances against putting up signs like that. We call them bandit signs, actually. And as I understand the law, um, if we, and I'll defer to the city attorney on this, but if we start implementing a policy where we're just not going to tolerate any signs, I don't care if they're campaign signs, garage sale signs, we buy home signs, we do pressure washing signs, we can enforce that if we do it fairly and across the board. Is that correct?
The ruling from the Supreme Court states that if you have to read the sign to enforce it, then you're violation. But if we just have a blanket policy that we're going to pull up every sign that's in the city right away, then you would be in good standing. However, in some of the other cities that have adopted policies like this, it becomes very controversial during election season when we have councilpersons and their opponents who place signs inappropriately, and those signs are removed. And it puts a lot of pressure on staff who are removing those signs because candidates get real mad about those signs because of candidate signs are Nazi. And, uh, it gets, it gets very, very heated, um, when that happens. So, um, you are correct that if, as long as we have a blanket policy, that would also have to include election signs. As long as we have a blanket policy about that, then we would be in good standing with the Supreme Court ruling.
And, and you know, Sheree, as far as I'm concerned, if you're a candidate or an incumbent, and you can't obey the city ordinances about sign placements and keep them out of the city easements, and maybe city council's not the place for you. So I would encourage council to tell staff that we would like to see some more enforcement of these violations. And I'd also like to throw out there that maybe it's time to consider bringing back the, uh, Beautify Beaumont Commission because what these signs do really is tell people, hey, it's okay to trash your city because we're doing it, everybody's doing it with impunity. So when you see that, the next thing is, uh, well, why not throw the bag of trash out on the street? Because, hey, you know, who cares? We are better than that. We can do better than that, so let's do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I want to thank our employees, Jackie with the Public Service Week, um, and also Miles with his, uh, participating in the mental health. I think that's something good to know, that 988 number, uh, for folks who may be having problems and need to speak to someone or text someone. So all that are here is put that number out, uh, just so people will know. I didn't even know that it existed. And, uh, thanks for everybody, uh, that did their presentation, your hot tax presentation. Very diverse crowd. It's a lot of, a lot of, uh, nice events, very successful events that we need to continue to do. And, uh, with the mural day, still waiting for one in my ward. Well, thank y'all.
Madam City Attorney.
Yes, so I would just like to say that this afternoon, I have the pleasure of going to a internship banquet at BISD, um, to recognize the intern that had in my office, Paige Jordan, who's a senior at Westbrook High School, and I'm super excited about that. She did an amazing job in the program that they have with placing students, um, in areas of their interest. I think it's doing a good job, and I know that there were some comments about that at our joint meeting, but I want you to know that it's working. I hosted one of those students, myself, Councilman Turner, and she, uh, she did an amazing job, and it was, she was a great asset to my office. But today, this evening, afternoon, rather, I have the opportunity to introduce to you Sidney Henry. Can stand Sidney. Sidney is a junior at Lamar University studying criminal justice, and she will be interning with my office, uh, for the month of May, so if you guys see her around, be nice. In connection with the city's, uh, council, so she planned to engage with our youth, um, community. We took that to heart, and so we are looking for opportunities and welcoming students who want to intern and learn more about what we do in city government, what it's like to be a municipal lawyer, but just, you know, educating the public on, on that process. So excited to do that.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Ellis.
Just an update, Mayor and Council. Next Tuesday, we have our first budget work session here in the council chambers. That budget work session is going to focus mainly on, uh, the CIP, the five-year CIP. So each, uh, director will go through their sections, parks, recreation, water, sewer, streets, drainage. We'll, uh, spend, uh, those few hours covering the CIP, getting feedback from council on our, uh, five-year community investment plan. We'll be providing breakfast and lunch that morning and afternoon. That's all.
Thank you. And Shere Ray.
Yes, I wanted to give an update, uh, this afternoon on our back billing for our garbage. As you know, I believe you know that the city attempted to move from a 30-day billing cycle to a 20-day billing cycle, and that did not work with our software, unfortunately. And so we discovered that everybody had one period of time where they were not charged for one month. So we are recouping those charges, um, on the April monthly utility bill. There's a separate line item for that charge, and that total revenue of the charges is approximately $585,000, which is material to our fund balance, and that's one of the reasons we need to collect that. I wanted to clear up that the reason it took so long to back bill those charges is because we had to contact our software vendor. They had to write a special program to get that charge put on another month's bill. We, that process took a little while because we had to go back and forth between ourselves and our software vendor, you know, making sure that only the people who were supposed to be charged were charged. So now all customers have received their bill for that charge. We're currently fielding calls regarding those charges, and I did want to state that, you know, as a city, we apologize for the inconvenience that it caused our customers, and we do appreciate their patience. Have any questions?
We have several questions.
Okay.
Councilman Durio, Councilman Gatz, and Councilman Neal.
I just want for the, um, public, that's the extra $23 charge on the water bill.
It's either $22.25, or if you're a senior, it's $20.02.
Oh, I was mine 23.
Should be 22, 25. See us if it wasn't.
Next question.
So I have had, and I'm sure the council members have had, many calls and emails about why is this being put out there? There was a notice that was included in a previous water bill that was sent out to the customers. It did not do a very good job of explaining the situation. It was also unsigned. It didn't look good. The other thing that, uh, people are telling me is that when they call to try to get an answer, frequently, they're told that their wait time is going to be an hour or more. Is that actually the message that we're sending out? And if so, what can we do to alleviate that?
Well, I do know the call volumes are very high right now because, of course, a lot of people have questions about that charge. Um, you know, we do get to the, to the calls as quickly as we possibly can. We return the calls if they leave a message. Other than that, other than having more staff, I'm not real sure what we could do.
So I do know that there are businesses that have the ability to tell you that if there is a long wait time for you to leave your number and you can get a call back. Do we have that ability?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, so they're not actually expecting to have to sit on hold for an hour and not get a call back?
No, they should not. They should be able to leave that, their number.
Okay. And, Mr. Manager, is there something that we can do, um, at least on our Facebook page or somewhere, to help explain what Ms. Ray has, uh, put forth verbally today to our constituents?
Sure, we'll do more to communicate the, uh, correct message out there. You know, we did put it in the water bill, but we can do Facebook and other forms of media to make sure that message has gotten to the public in a clear and concise manner.
Thank you.
As described by our finance director.
Thank you.
Councilman Neal.
So I guess my, my main question is, how was this discovered?
Well, I wasn't part of that process at that time, um, but we have Jeff Downs here. I think he can assist us with that.
And so the, uh, the previous CEO noticed that the fund balance, or the fund was low, and they asked me to investigate. And once I, I was in IT at the time, once I worked with, uh, Bridget in the building department and discovered that, um, these weren't being billed, uh, we immediately started looking at how we could regain the money.
And how far back does this go?
Uh, the, the 30-day billing started in November of '22, and we got everything back to a 20-day billing in August of '23.
All right, but these, these $22 or $23 charges that we're charging people now, how far back is that $23 from? It's over a multi-month period?
It's any, any time between November '22 to August of '23.
So some of these people, we're going back 18 months on?
Yes.
I can't comprehend that.
It took several months to get the, you know, to get the program written with the software vendor, to get it so that we wouldn't be charging people that shouldn't be charged and only charge the people that had a missed garbage charge.
And how much, what's the overall value of this?
It's $585,000.
$585,000 going back over 18 months. I don't know, I struggle with this. In the real world, in a real business, if your billing department screwed up like that, you can't go back two years and collect money for something that you forgot to invoice. I just don't think this is appropriate to do to the citizens. It's causing all kinds of hell. I know all of us are getting phone calls on this thing. Um, I don't know, I struggle with this one.
All right, Councilman Gatz and Council- All right, Councilman Getz and Councilman Turner?
A couple of things. First off, if somebody has moved from the city, closed out their water bill account during that 18-month period, we're just out of luck, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, so we know that there's some instances where we've lost revenue because of this foul-up. But as far as forgiveness of this, and I'll ask the city attorney to help me with this, but I believe there's some provisions in the Texas Constitution that prevent a city from just providing a service like that without being able to collect on it. Is that accurate?
So unpopular opinion, in fact, but there's no statutory limit on debt owed to a municipality, so we can collect forever. But there is a statute that says that there's, you can't have a, you can't give away services as a gift of a public fund. So the fact that it was discovered and then we reimbursed it, and I get that it's, you know, terrible that it's so far out, doesn't eliminate it. So in a general business, there's a waiver, but we're immune, we're exempt from that under the statute. So we can collect the debt from 30 years ago if we so choose.
So, you know, I get Councilmember Neal's comment, and I can't say I disagree with it. Unlike a private business, we have a constitutional limitation that prevents us from just saying, oh, well, we screwed up and, you know, we're going to write it off. So as was mentioned, that's a material amount of money to our fund. And, you know, if we could write it off, we'd probably have to increase our water bill to, you know, recover that revenue. So the price of chemicals have gone up to treat our water. You know, things continue to increase in price, and we try to keep these water rates down as low as possible. But, you know, you have to have revenue to run a water system.
Councilman Turner, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Just, just me being honest with our city managers. I normally do when we have these type of conversations. It might not be the most popular thing to say, but I always rather be honest. I'm more concerned with the accountability of what took place and who was at fault. Because we say in previous administration, the previous this, but we, you know, I would like a report on specifics. So what took place with whoever the previous person, or who really was responsible for this? Because it's kind of hard for me to support it. I feel like this, in the business world, you make a mistake, sometimes you have to take that loss and own your mistake, even though I understand this is government, but I understand we have seniors that are on fixed income and $20 may not be much to some, but people who are on fixed monthly income, $20 can be the difference between them, you know, eating and things of that magnitude. So I, I can't say I, I support this. I honestly don't. But I, I'm more concerned of accountability. How did we get there? What preventative measures have we put in place? And what level of accountability did we have for that mistake? Because $580-some thousand is a big mistake.
Yeah, and we can get you a more detailed report, but I think he mentioned how it was discovered and who discovered it. And then we had some people there that, that, that when we did the software change, it, it kind of set this thing in motion. You know, we went to the billing cycle, 30-day billing cycle, whatever, then found out that we couldn't bill certain state entities, I believe it was state entities. And so we had to go back, and when we went back, that started to create problems with people getting billed correctly for their services. You know, people did receive these services. It's not like we didn't deliver these services. We picked up garbage and we picked that up. So that's, that's not the case. You know, certainly don't want to make a mistake like that. It's, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money to your enterprise fund, $500-and-seven thousand. We wouldn't be here trying to recover it if it wasn't a substantial amount of money. Where you could be looking at a rate increase this next budget year if you don't. And that way, this way, people who receive the service are paying for it. If you do a rate increase, you're charging people who didn't receive the service. So, you know, there's no great way to resolve the issue, but you look at all the things that are given and try to come up with the best solution. You know, one, two, I guess, one, it's a lot of, a lot of money to our fund. Two, it helps to defer or lessen a rate increase this next budget year and doing that, too. And we'll just, we'll work, make sure our software and processes are in place and we'll get them in a, in a, in a place where things will run better in the future.
All right, and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Downs. And I appreciate y'all coming up here. I know neither one of you were a part of it. I believe it was first brought to the council last August, as I recall, whenever it was presented to us about the fact that this was coming, but now that we're experiencing it. But, and, and certainly, being from the business world, I will say that cities and businesses are a lot different. And this is y'all's money that we're collecting, and it is frustrating for people. But I know that the water department will work with anybody that it presents a financial hardship on. Even though it's $20 a month, as Councilman Turner said, that can squeeze somebody's budget, and we will work with them. And, and I do believe that we have things in place now to prevent this from hopefully happening again. And certainly, it's not something that's happened repeatedly. But we, we feel your frustration, and we've all received a number of calls. But at the end of the day, we do want to, $580,000 for the city of Beaumont is, is demonstrated here today with the various requests. It's, it's still a lot of money, and it's not easily just brushed aside. But I appreciate all the council people's comments. Yes, sir.
I just wanted, for clarification, that $22, that's a one-time payment. That's not a continuous, is it?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a one-time payment, and if somebody needs to spread that out over a period of time, you know, we'll work with them on that $20 payment. It's, it's not that we're just requiring they pay that $20.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Okay, a couple of things, Mayor. The Public Service Week, I'd like to commend our employees for their public service and all public service workers, but also this council, you're public servants too. So I commend you for Public Service Week. I commend our staff for Hurricane Preparteness Week. It's, it's a tremendous deal. I don't have to say that in Beaumont, Texas. What they offer and bring to the community. Having been a emergency management coordinator in my past, I know how important they are. And I know how important they do to a community and how much they mean. When something happens, they become the person we all look to. Sign enforcement, I agree with Councilmember Getz. So we have staff working with sign enforcement and right-of-ways. It does degrade your community. It gives it a look that's not attractive. So we are working with staff for the sign enforcement that's in the right-of-way. City attorney, for sure. And I have one correction from, from last week. Councilmember Turner, I think I told you, CIP was funded 25% by grants, but it was less than that. It's 13%, so I wanted to correct that on, in the meeting with you. Thank you.
All right. Is that all, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
All right. And I just want to announce, unrelated, this is not a city-sponsored or city event in any way, but this coming Monday, May 13th, at the Montane Center, there is going to be a citywide prayer from 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. at the Montane Center. And everyone is invited. And also, I want to applaud all the hot tax applicants. And the information that you shared today, and again, being able to present it like this can be perhaps awkward. A lot of people don't get to do that a lot. But, you know, it reminds me on a weekly basis how much is going on in Beaumont, Texas. And oftentimes, I know as council, we can't get to all the different events because there's multiple, multiple events going on at one time, which I think is a great problem to have. And I appreciate all of your passion and your commitment to pull off these events because it is continuing to make Beaumont more attractive to people from across the state and across the nation. And with that, I know yesterday we had a, for, out on Major Drive, there was a warrant and ran. And I just want to applaud our police and fire. Oftentimes, there's a whole lot of commentary when things happen. But at the end of the day, what we have is some real professional, public safety professionals that put their lives in danger protecting our property and, and individuals in this community. And I appreciate all that they do. And I, I know that it is appreciated, but sometimes it's, it's inconvenient for people when things like this are happening. But it's, it's other people causing those inconveniences. But our police and fire are always going to respond as they need to. And with that, this may be the shortest meeting I've gotten to preside over. The meeting is adjourned.